Meeting in the morning to have planning commission to order. Does anyone want me to read the pre-meeting announcement?
No.
No.
Okay. So we'll go right to the agenda, general public comments. Are there any comments by members of the audience on matters that are not on the agenda? Okay, how about the meeting minutes from April 10?
I propose an amendment. I was present at that meeting and I noted as such on the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
You're just left off altogether. You're not even listed as absent.
I feel bad about that. Without amendment, I move for approval on the minute.
Second.
Motion second in all favor. And I abstain because I was not here. We bumbled through without you. Yeah, there you go. Next item is S U B 25 dash 34, Sharon Hayes, 1220 Lyons Avenue.
Mr. President, it's all referred to the slide on the screen. All right, so the applicant is requesting or own two pieces of property on Lyons Avenue. Currently, they're working with the adjacent property owner to convey basically 1,700 foot plus or minus square foot section of their property to an existing parcel 31.1. And you can see the three parcels here that are in question for this subdivision. The next slide shows an aerial view of 1220 Lyons Avenue, which the applicant is present, and 1232 Lyons Avenue where the property is going to be subdivided and conveyed to the adjoining lot. This is the zoning map showing that it's in the R1 district. And then this is the site plan that was, or the survey flat that was prepared with the application. And what you can see here, I just color coded some things. These two lots, the orange and blue, are what the applicant currently own. The way the zoning code works is that you can see there's an encroachment of the house structure on the blue lot into the orange lot. Those are permitted, generally speaking, if they're under common ownership. So if somebody wanted to do an addition and wanted to build into the side yard, but it wasn't actually connected to or physically joined together as one parcel, as long as there's a deed restriction in their deed, then that can be done. I'm not sure when this house was built was related to the zoning code, but this is the setup that we have. The parcel, the piece of property that the applicant is trying to acquire is in green. And once it's acquired, it'd be consolidated with the orange section to create two new or at least one new parcel of land. And as I noted in the staff report, that would not be compliant, at least standalone in terms of the lot frontage or the lot size requirements. The other issue facing or with this potential project is that the, when the boundary adjustment happens, the proposed setback for the accessory structure on parcel 31 will only be three foot. It's required to be at least five foot. And so there's some avenues that the applicant will work around to deal with that issue. A couple of them are listed in the staff recommendations, but there's some other ways that we could approach this as well, but wanted to note that in the proposal. And that will conclude staff's report.
Can you hear anyone say anything?
Anything.
If you do, you have to come up to the microphone and say your name.
I don't know, I've never done this before. My name is Alex Keenan. I work for Possess and Associates at 125 Lakeview Drive. I think he kind of hit the nail on the head there. There's some things that we can do to address the issues that the staff noted. I've reviewed the reports, so I think that we can work around the zoning issues there. Thank you, and thanks for your consideration.
I do have a few questions, just to clarify Ricky. So essentially, that vacant lot that's in the middle, we're just erasing one of the lot lines combining, or is there actual adjustment so that the vacant, small lot is actually getting closer to that existing garage? Can you clarify that?
Yes, let's go back here. So, so these are the two lots that are currently owned.
Right.
This lot here, to the left of the orange shaded area.
Yep.
This is what's to be subdivided.
Yep.
Off and consolidated with this. So right currently, the property line is here for the adjacent property owner. It's actually moving back.
Sure, but I guess my real question is to kind of narrow it down. That small sliver that is not colored is kind of hard to clear.
This piece, yep.
Essentially, what we're asking to do, that the piece, that's the lot line, that's to the right going north to south.
This one?
Yes, that's basically being erased.
Correct.
So.
In the consolidation.
Okay, and so that would mean that we're not actually creating a non-conforming lot as regards to the garage at all? There's no adjustment whatsoever?
Yes, well, there is, because right now the property line is here.
That's not a standalone lot. That's being cut off.
Right now, the parcel 31 goes to here.
Okay, so the new, there would be a new lot line that's going to be three feet closer.
Correct. This existing one would be.
Gotcha.
Yeah, okay. Sorry for the.
No, I just wanted to make sure that I had it correct.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm confused up there with the orange. The orange is just an area that they want to combine? Is that a separate lot by itself right now?
Yeah, there's two lots that this house sits on right now by itself. They want to acquire this from the neighboring property owner and consolidate it with this piece.
Okay.
So there would be, this center line would go away. This would be the new property line between Mr. Zirkle and Mr. Stratus. And in so doing, they're creating a non-conforming situation with the garage, which staff then also mentioned in the report, and there are ways to mitigate that.
So if I understood, we got the blue and the orange up there, they're two separate lots, but they're owned by the same person.
Correct.
And what you want to do is add a little bit more to the orange and still be two separate lots, but owned by the same person.
That's what the application is stating, yes.
So why get so close to the garage? Why not draw the appropriate setback? Why not draw the line five feet from the existing structure?
I would defer to the applicant on that, but I think there's a way, I'm not sure. I know that in the packet you also saw like landscaping improvements that are planned, and I think the fencing is also planned, so I'm not sure what's guiding that, but there's different ways we can do that. Either in one of the conditions or recommendations, either have the applicant adjust that so it would be compliant, or you could potentially go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and get a variance for it, and then maybe require easement so that at least, if that had to stay where it is, you could require an easement that would allow, if something has to happen for this property owner to go on this property owners, to do maintenance or whatever it would be on the garage. There's different ways you can address it.
I'm curious as to why, if this is done, they just don't consolidate it by minor subdivision and nobody will be law.
So that's going to be my suggestion as well.
That's a recommendation in the packet.
Because as the application right in front of us does understand the code, we can't subdivide it into the resulting non-conforming parcel. Do you agree with that?
If they got a variance for what were the particular code restrictions.
So then it would go to the BZA first, and then come to us for subdivision. It would seem to me that would be more logical, wouldn't it?
And we've talked about that again. Yes, it could be done that way, but again, then the BZA would only be looking at more of the hypothetical, and then the planning commission would be looking actually at the design and layout of the lot. So if the planning commission, in my view, thinks that that, you know, the subdivision is permissible within the code itself, if there's a variance issue, then the BZA would take that up first. Because the BZA doesn't have purview over, in the subdivision ordinance of layout of streets, or it doesn't have, that's not their purview. Right? But they do have purview over the setback requirements, they do have purview over the lot frontage requirement, yeah.
So if we did this, we would have to say it's contingent upon the BZA granting the variance, because if they don't, then we're not going to create it.
Yes, certainly, that's right.
And there would have to be some extraordinary condition that would prompt the variance. I mean, variances aren't just because it's inconvenient.
Correct.
It would have to be some, of, something of the property of nature or something.
Yes, correct. Right, yep.
May I ask the applicant a question?
Sure, but you have to come back up to the microphone. You're going to get your exercise today.
Yes, so I think we could avoid what we're kind of talking about. Would, you are the, I guess, the property owner in this case, would they be willing to shift the property, or even just by the garage there, shifting it over two feet so that there's no variance even required?
Yes, so after reading the staff report, I looked into the setback requirements, and one of you asked a question about why is it set where it is. I think that they got maybe twisted up on how the setbacks are laid out in the code. And they were reading the setbacks for the architectural features, which can encroach upon, you know, three feet within a property line or apartment structure, whatever it is. And the fence line, you know, they said, oh, that's an architectural feature, let's go three feet from that garage, and we'll set there. So to answer your question, I think that we could do that. I think that we could, you know, to avoid all the back and forth between the BZA and here, and create, you know, a headbutt scenario, combine those three properties to meet the, you know, total square footage and frontage requirements that we have to meet, and also shift that property line over to be five feet from that garage. So I don't think the client would have an issue with that if it gets it moved along faster, but I can certainly talk to them, suggest that to them. That's, in our view as the consultant, that's what we think is probably the easiest and quickest way to deal with this.
Correct.
So if I understand what you're saying, and this is kind of what I'd like to see resolved the whole thing, basically you go back and say, instead of this section, you need to go two feet more, you only need, so you got a five-foot setback. You need to do that first, and make a contention on us doing a minor subdivision, which we, that's easy enough to do, that combines all of those lots into one lot.
Sure.
That you don't have to get a variance, we don't create a non-conforming lot.
Sure.
Then everything, everyone goes away happy. That's my view as well. After reading that report and looking at the ordinance, that's kind of where we ended up as well. It seems to be the cleanest way to get through this.
So not to belabor this, but if we table it tonight and give you a chance to do another plan, we can take it up as old business at our next meeting and be able to move this thing along. Exigent circumstances that we don't know about that make that problematic?
No, I think the client's just kind of ready to be done with this, because this has been like a multi-month-long ordeal, so.
Well, not for us.
But also for you guys, you just started, but we've been dealing with it for a while, so obviously I can't change the way the governmental process goes, but I'll defer to you guys.
Well, to me, that's going to be easiest, because I think at that point, it's going to be like, well, that's easy, it's, you know, I can't say anything until we have it in front of us, but that should be easy to approve, whereas right now, it's like, why are we going to create non-conformances that the BZA may not allow, that if we say yes, continue on BZA, and then they say no, you're back to square one again.
Exactly, we have to change it. Right, and that's what we want to avoid. We don't want to go through back and forth, back and forth, you know, month after month. So I'd like to avoid the variance process completely. I don't want to deal with the variance, because we probably won't get it, so I'd like to just fix the things.
Understand your clients may be frustrated. Give them our regards, and we're getting good advice here. We can move this on to the next agenda.
Well, as I say, Mr. President, the other option would be to make it conditional. If the applicant is agreeable, items two, three, four, and five can still apply in staff recommendation, and then, or if not, if they're not agreeable, then we're back to.
I think we need to do this clean and just basically redo it, put the new plot in front of us next month, is what I think we need to do.
Move to table the application.
I just want to say that I, I mean, just wanted, for the record, that I would think this isn't easy enough with just shifting a lot line, that I'd be willing to approve it just conditionally with that, but, you know, obviously.
It's a densely populated neighborhood. It's something, I just think we need to be careful. I agree with the president.
Second.
Motion second in all favor. Table. opposed.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is S U B 25 dash 35, Sharon Hayes, 336 Mulberry Street.
And the applicant is present here, and so I'm going to follow up the slides here. The three properties we're discussing are 336 Mulberry, 1257 Oxford Place, and 1249 Oxford Place. These are the outlines of the current parcels as they are today. Here's an aerial in your packet, there's a location, note 12, lot 1257 or 1257 Oxford Place, destruction on that property has been demolished, as shown in this picture. Here's the zoning map, all R1A district. This is the existing plat map, you can say, showing the layout of the parcels as they are, and there are two principal structures, one at 336 and the other one at 1249 Oxford. And the proposed subdivision is outlined here in red, and then I'm going to walk through with, again, colors of what's being proposed. The area in blue is proposed to be subdivided and consolidated with the adjoining property owner, so it'd go from parcel 170 to parcel 171. And then the green shaded area would go from parcel 171 to what would be consolidated with parcel 170 and 167. So at the end of the day, the result configuration would look like this. Two lots, green and the blue lot, and that's, that would be the, that would be how that would be laid out. Some other things to note that we discussed with the applicant, and it's in your packet, is the issue with flag lots generally speaking. The code makes reference of it in several different places, and I'm just going to read it for the record here, but the lot arrangement and design shall be such that all sublots will provide satisfactory, desirable building sites properly related to topography and the character of the surrounding development. That was letter A. Letter C, under 132106, says, "And handled lots and flag lots may be permitted where topographic conditions or property configurations indicate such lots to be necessary and desirable, provided that the main portion of the lot conforms to the requirements of the zoning ordinance." And then item B, that was not in your packet, under 1321, states that lots with double frontage will be avoided. And one of the things that we discussed with the applicant is the reason this blue section here is being subdivided and consolidated with the joiner is to prevent that double frontage issue, and that's the reason for that. So at the end of the day, there would be two lots that would be both be conforming with respect to the lot provisions in R1 district. The only issue being is that the existing parcel 167 only has 65-foot of street furniture, and by the way, the code reads, that's not pre-existing non-conforming. You may modify lots and subdivide them, but at the end of the day, the net result has to be, it has to be in compliance with the zoning code. So because of that, they, the applicant would probably need a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals for that issue, which the applicant does not own the property on either side, so that's, I mean, they're locked in at 65, there's just no getting around that issue. So that will conclude staff's report.
Anybody have any questions for the planner, who we talked about?
One, sorry.
Sure.
Clarifying question. So the 65-foot frontage that is existing today, that is not being adjusted, is just, it is what it is today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, applicant.
This is Sharon Hayes, who is the owner of the three properties. My name is Paul Vermania, I'm her architect, sort of helping her through this process. I think the thing that we most wanted to do was to be able to put an accessory structure on this and figure out a way to configure these three lots in a way that, you know, would allow us to do that. You know, as you know, you can't put an accessory structure on its own parcel, so we were struggling, I guess would be the right word, to figure out how to configure these lots in a way that would meet all your requirements, you know. Initially, we thought just to combine through, but the double frontage situation through lots, I think was a kind of a challenge that we didn't expect to experience. So, you know, we see that we're working with an existing non-conforming condition, and if anything, we're enlarging that lot. So it'd be nice if we could avoid the variance, but we understand the process and don't want to work that. Is there anything you have, you want to say? Oh, a couple of things. We do have some trees, so that we've been trying to preserve on the site, which I think has kind of affected some of our dimensional constraints. So, you know, our thinking was that any future accessory structure would be in line with the existing facade of 1249. We did also reach out to MUB and did get a letter of approval, it was planned since the staff report came in, so we can share that with you. Anything else that you're?
No, so a letter from MUB, why don't you give a copy to Ricky so he can put it as part of the record?
Maybe not for you.
Okay.
And so here are some of the larger trees that we have on the site.
Just came in late this afternoon.
Mr. President, if you don't have a question for the architect?
Please.
I do have a question, and I think normally this would be outside kind of the purview of our, but given the kind of dimensional constraints here, and you guys are looking and going through the design process and having an A D E or an accessory structure put on the property.
It wouldn't be an A.
Or accessory structure.
An accessory structure, so it would not have a residence. It's sort of a, you know, like a pool house, pool building.
Gotcha.
So not residential at all, so there wouldn't be two residences on one parcel.
Gotcha. It almost seems that if we'd left that as the third parcel, we could get a, well, full-on unit on there, that would kind of solve the kind of issue of the double frontage, but I don't want to take, so it sounds like there might be a pool in the future, is that, is that safe to say?
Maybe, yes.
Maybe.
So in some ways, that, it's one of those, you can't have that type of structure on its own parcel.
Gotcha.
As it moves.
Sure, okay, that, well, that makes sense then. That's all I had to say.
And I think the idea of combining 336 and 1257 would be basically to, you know, though both parcels are really Ms. Hayes's primary residence, the other is just a guest cottage for friends and family that come in.
Great.
I have a quick question, and thank you for explaining kind of the layout, because I was kind of wondering aesthetically what we're kind of doing with the neighborhood and, you know, just making sure that your neighbors will, you know, be happy with the development and it brings, you know, value to the neighborhood.
Absolutely. I think that the idea would be to really try to maintain the street facade along Oxford, with whatever new, you know, accessory structure. And you have residential development standards, which we would work with in terms of materials and things like that. I think that's sort of why we chose those dimensions. We were struggling with what was the appropriate setback to that, you know, the side yard condition.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, we have trees and other big, kind of, you know, specimen trees that we're really trying to stay out of that shadow line of those trees, and you can see that area.
Okay, gotcha.
So why combine, and maybe this is already exist, why combine 1257 Oxford with 336 Mulberry instead of combining 1257 and 1249 Oxford?
Because Ms. Hayes's primary residence is at 336, and whatever future development would really be attached, it would be for her own personal use.
The second reason would be that the structure, my understanding is that if I were to combine 1257 with 1249, the size would be limited to the small, it's a small cottage on 1249, and I want something that's small enough to get some exercise in, in a lap pool, so that's why my dimensions need to be a little bit spread out. And since I own all three, I mean, we do plan on doing a lot of plantings, and I'm real aware of neighbors being satisfied, and I would do it the way I would want to look at it.
Okay, any member of the audience that likes to be in favor of the petition? Anyone in opposition? Okay, staff recommendation, please.
Staff's not objected with the proposed minor subdivision and consolidation of property as proposed by the applicant. However, if the planning commission were to approve it, you can see the conditions listed in the packet.
For approval, subject to staff condition.
Second.
Motion second in all favor. You want to oppose?
Okay, you want to discuss first?
Yeah, and I hate that, it's just that, I mean, I'm in favor of this and what's going on. It's that blue portion that's kind of cutting off, I guess it's to prevent a flag lot situation, is that?
The blue piece?
Yes, so that comes out to.
Yeah.
Just to prevent that one.
Yes, right, so can we read that? Because I, it just seems like that's a.
Yeah, I mean, it says that a through lots will be, will be avoided, so either they would have to ask for variance relief for that.
So maybe another commissioner's report is will compulsory, are we mandated to follow will?
I think so. I think what we have to do is, if it said may, then it would be just.
You're going to get a variance for the flag lot, you're going to get a variance for the through lot.
Right.
One way to.
Yeah, 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 okay. I just.
Or you're going to apply for it, about that.
Yeah, right.
And I'm speaking for them.
I mean, that's what the code says, that's what the code says, and we're dealing with it, so I, I mean, I just, I hate that, that blue portion, and wish to.
We would have preferred.
Sure, I'm sure you would.
And we're just trying to work with.
Yes.
All the rules.
Yes. So then I guess there's nothing to discuss. So then I guess there's nothing to discuss in that.
Call the question?
Yeah.
Daniel, if you have something.
No, it's fine.
Sure. You don't sound very sure.
No, I think, I think it's just that blue piece is...
Yes, dressing.
It's just awkward.
Compared with the law. It does.
Yes, but it needs to be there.
Right. Okay. Motion second in all favor?
Good luck with your project.
Okay.
Anywhere apart from the rest of us?
No, I don't know the BZA, so...
Oh, yeah.
That's your next stop. Okay, anything? Committee reports. Staff comments?
Just that staff did work to put an amendment to the subdivision ordinance to give staff authority to approve minor subdivisions, but was informed that because of our existing SAVO is grandfathered into the state code, any amendment would require a full bringing up to code now, and we're not prepared to do that at this time. But that's, I think that's more in the discussion where it's been brought before, it's because it's just not making one amendment, it would have to be totally brought up to code. However, we would, staff would like to start this year on a complete overhaul of the SAVO. So at that time, guaranteed, it will be in there.
When I got my packet with two minor subdivisions in it, I spoke to attorney Simonton, and we may have a couple of ideas on ways to not trigger an entire update at this time while being able to.
I'm all ears, so...
So we are, we are working on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Move to jury.
Second.
Okay, go. Thank you.